That should do it. Okay. I don't know if you want to start this off in any way, or if I should just jump in?
I'll just pass it to you. So this is a Board of Finance Town Council Liaison Committee meeting on general government, uh, finance and the library. I probably butchered that name, but you get the idea. And I'm gonna pass it to Anne and Josh to present what they are planning to present to the Board of Finance tonight at their budget meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you. Um, so I'm just gonna share my screen. So, um, as you know, general government covers a lot of departments from the first selectmen's office, finance, IT, you know, to revoke the registrar voters, town clerk, parking, land use and building departments, uh, and so on. So there's a lot of departments to get through. So I'm gonna kind of show their budget as of the vote on, uh, last week from the Board of Selectmen. So it's what their budget is currently. Um, and then go to the next page with some highlights for any changes that, uh, from previous year or this year, from FY twenty four to twenty five. Uh, and if you have any questions, I'll stop between each department, uh, and I can go back and forth if, if you wanna just take a look at the numbers deeper. And, um, yeah, so starting at the expenditure side, now is the first selectmen's office. That is a decrease over last year of one point two nine percent. The biggest drivers in this department is the salaries part-time is decreasing by thirty percent. Uh, the town is really doing a, a, a deep dive on the, uh, part-time needs and ongoing projects and, and for this, we're lowering hers by about thirty percent. Economic development is going down by forty eight percent. A number of the projects were completed in FY twenty four, so the previous level of funding is no longer needed. Uh, meals and events is going up one point five K. Uh, this is used for recognition events, retirements, and, and really the two major employee events for the year. Um, this is really bringing it in line to what the actuals have, have historically been and, and what the expected FY twenty four year-end actuals will be. Uh, and supply office is going up one thousand. That's, um, in the town hall. I think we have about two, uh, two color copiers, one in the basement, one on the first floor, and then we have one on the second floor for, for a kind of all of us to use on the top. And so this is, uh, I think the lease is up this coming June, so this is just adding on, uh, for color copying capabilities on our second floor for kind of all of us to share and, and what goes along with that. Any questions on the first selectmen's office?
Uh, could you, Josh, could you send this presentation to us, or did you send it?
It was sent, yeah, I think, uh, yes, about two days ago or so, uh, when the main bulk of the emails were going out for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'll trace back. Okay.
Um, it's also, if it's easier, it's also on the town's website and budget documents, this year's budget and presentations, whatever's easier for you.
My question is, what's the big driver in the twenty-six thousand dollar increase of full-time salary?
Um, what's the biggest driver there in full-time salary?
The first selectman salary was, went up.
It did go up.
It got voted to go up.
It went up because that was voted in by the prior town councilors.
Yes.
The town council voted on that, yes.
Yes, and it's not just the first selectmen, it's all elected positions.
Yeah, which you won't see the other two elected officials or officials in this budget. There'll be other budgets that you'll see like a similar higher increase because of that vote.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll also kind of add to that, um, as a general broad, um, increase in a lot of these departments, the four oh one A employer contribution. Um, we were doing a six percent match. We're now doing a seven percent match for, uh, town hall union employees. So you'll see a lot of departments that have town hall union employees, uh, increasing that number and therefore driving, you know, this nine point two percent is really just representative of that increase. Any other questions on the first select? Okay, on to finance. Uh, finance sees a five point two seven percent increase over the FY twenty four budget. Uh, the main drivers here are salaries part-time is up seventeen percent. This was, uh, like the first selectman. Uh, the treasurer was, had a increase in his salary, uh, so that goes into our part-time account. Uh, salaries OT overtime is up, uh, five thousand and change. Um, you know, as, as processes in the finance department are being streamlined, we're considering the, um, necessity of an, an extra, an additional full-time employee. And before that decision is made, we're kind of supplementing with overtime, to kind of make up for that difference. Um, training is also up, uh, forty-nine hundred. Uh, training is kind of a cyclical, um, line item. When we have every other year, we go to munis or GFPA conferences, this number goes up and then, and then it kind of comes down in subsequent years. Uh, this includes a, a GFPA in-person events and munis trainings, GFPA trainings that the staff in the finance department take place in, and also the staff here at the town hall. Uh, they also come to take part in munis trainings just for general processes. Uh, professional service audit is down fourteen percent. This is, uh, just going to reflect actual costs, uh, from the past years and the possibility of fluctuation due to, uh, an RFP that we're going out for. Any questions?
Yes, if, if I may, uh, two things. The salaries overtime, is that to, uh, for, to take a part-time employee to full-time? Is that the difference? Or is this to bring somebody in on a temporary basis until you have the over, the full, uh, salary approved?
No, it's, it's, um, so it's to, it's to cover the current, uh, employees. So we're doing a lot of process changes, um, to streamline it. And I, I don't wanna ask for a person or a, you know, a part-time yet until I get those processes in place to say, do we actually need it? We've streamlined it because we've had a lot of changes. We had open gov go into place, so that generated a lot. We have, uh, my rec going place for last year, it generated a lot. Um, and then this year we have a lot more processes again. Capital assets, we're gonna fine tune a little bit more. So as I keep changing those processes, it may save us the time and its overtime will go down in the future if I don't leave that person. So I don't wanna ask one before I know that I truly have a need. So it's the overtime that's gonna cover that until we get where I want us, the department to go.
No, I understand that, but does that mean overtime usually means a person who's already on staff that you're giving extra hours to? This is not a new person coming in?
No, no, not at all. It's just four or five, about three or four positions that are helping right now.
Okay. Okay, in the professional service audit, was that not done this year and that's why there's a decrease? I don't understand the decrease on that line item.
Oh, that's the yearly audit that we do. Um, so it was, it was done and passed this year. Um, but if you look at, at the historical, um, price, the historical actuals, FY twenty-two was eighty-eight. FY twenty-three, I think is, is probably split between years, so it can, it's, it doesn't exactly represent the real cost within FY twenty-three. Um, but it's closer to, uh, eighty thousand probably. Um, and so that's where it's, it's kind of turning downwards.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Josh, tell them, John, what, what's the difference between the professional audit and the special, professional special audit? What, what is the special audit about?
Separate, internal audit.
Yeah, it's the, it's, so we have, we're actually going out for, uh, requests for proposals on both of those right now. The external audit, which is the professional service audit, is our normal end-of-year audit. Um, the professional service special audit has, is a line item that's been in, um, they haven't used in a couple of years. It's bringing in a firm to do internal audits of our processes. Uh, like a deeper dive into, we wanna look at parking racks and go, look at the processes, make sure that they're in line in the way they should be. So the audit committee wants to go out to bring that, that firm again, so we have two, our request for proposals currently out to bid, for, uh, one for the regular audit and one for a special.
Okay, thank you.
A quick question about training. I was at the initial Board of Selectmen meeting where, um, this number included training for the treasurer. And has that amount come out, or is he going to audit with other employees for the training that he needs?
So that was taken out by the Board of Selectmen. That's, I think it was four hundred?
That's net.
Yeah.
Okay.
Four hundred hours?
No, twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four.
Four hundred.
So the total amount, I think, was seventy-four hundred and now it's five thousand.
So let me ask you, are, are training, um, benefits provided to all employees? And are they all being cut or just the treasurer?
Uh, it depends on, well, the treasurer, the, the thought process is how much, uh, training does he need above and beyond to the level of forty-five hundred dollars? He is a member of GFPA. So GFPA offers a lot of training, whether Connecticut or, um, for the national. So you can go online and sign up for those training classes and, you know, they're usually, they can range anything from a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars. So his training is more specific because, um, the, the investments that the town can do are very limited because of what they're allowed to get involved in. So the training is basically dictated by the state statute of what we can invest in.
I'm, I, I, Anne, I understand what you're saying, but we do not deny employees to get a higher education degree and we've paid for a few of them throughout the years, so.
I don't think part-time.
No, not part-time employees don't get the level of training like that. They get the training that they would need, like I said, the GFPA and things, but part-time employees don't get that level of training.
Okay, so the answer is that be, part-time employees don't get it, that's the reason. Then that is a valid reason. I just wanna be sure that we're, um, we're justifying a denial of a benefit that's offered across the board. So no part-time employee in town hall receives education reimbursement?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on finance? Okay, on to the tax assessor. Uh, the tax assessor sees a five point four, it, it is five point four one, five point four one, um, percent increase. This is really just driven by salaries. Um, the service contracts are actually down, uh, two point five K reflecting of the quoted price from QDS cloud software, but when you look in, in their larger scheme, uh, of the nineteen and a half thousand, they're going up, eighteen and a half thousand is full-time salary and the rest is four oh one A and social security or so. Um, this is because I, I think they have two people stepping, um, and then cost of living adjustments are in there as well for the two town hall union employees. Um, so that is tax assessor. Any questions on that? Okay, on to the tax collector. Tax collector is up three point one six percent. Uh, there's a fifty percent drop in salaries part-time, uh, like I said, we're kind of evaluating the part-time needs in all departments and so this saw a reduction of, I think, about three thousand. Um, the training and travel is up seven hundred and one fifty respectively. Um, there's a new, not additional, but a new FTE in, uh, a new employee rather in the tax collect office. So this represents, uh, the training for them to kind of be on the way to be a, a certified tax collector. Um, and really all of the increases are again salary and training mainly for that one employee. Any question, questions on the tax collector?
Uh, is there a conflict when you say that your, could you repeat what you said before about the education to get to?
So this is a, a full-time employee that is being trained to be a certified tax collector.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. On to legal. Uh, right now we have legal as flat. Um, we're anticipating a decline from FY twenty-three's peak of four hundred and seventy thousand. So we have it at four hundred thousand right now. Um, we have one, is it one or two technically? We have one, the Public Works Union contract is being, is being negotiated. If fire will start to be negotiated as well, um. So.
Uh, yes, pub, pub, sorry, um, Public Works will start negotiating in April and then fire and police are not until next year.
Right, any questions on legal?
Uh, yeah, just one on, on settlements. Um, it was one settlement, it looks like back in twenty-one. Uh, does that mean the town has not had to settle any legal actions since fiscal year twenty-one?
That's a good question, um.
But I doubt, based on the numbers alone, yes, we wouldn't have many settlements because it would have gone in there. Um, the only other time then is if it goes through our insurance, that our insurance covers it and we have the deductible that we cover of fifteen thousand, um, before it goes, that the insurance pays out the difference. So different types of settlements would show up, so that would be the insurance settlement that would be the fifth, the co-pay, as we call it, the fifteen thousand or true legal settlements would be in here.
Okay, that's good news. Thank you.
And I always ask this because our legal bills have tended to be more than what we've budgeted. Are we sure, given the pending eight thirty G litigation, um, the sort of three tranches of that, that we are? And this might be a question for Deanna, are we sure that we are covered there and that we have enough of a cushion?
So I asked, I asked Deanna the same thing during the Board of Selectmen, uh, meetings. Are you sure you wanna lower to the four hundred thousand? She seemed pretty confident after speaking with legal counsel that, um, you know, keeping it flat from FY twenty-four would be, uh, an acceptable thing. And like Anne had said previously, maybe we're, we're actually doing an RFP as well for legal.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and that, 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 as Josh said, Ira from, uh, Virtue Moses was the one who said, no, he's very confident that this number is, is okay, even with, um, eight thirty G.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, just a question, if, if we're going out for an RFP, this is just a budgeted number. If the legal contract with a different law firm should be higher, how is that handled? Do they come back for an additional special appropriation, or is that handled through the Board of Selectmen?
Well, hopefully we wouldn't pick someone more expensive, but if it was, then we would have money in contingency to transfer in if necessary.
Okay.
It wouldn't come to an appropriation like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. On to HR. HR is up two point six two percent. Uh, there's been an increase in the cost of state drug and alcohol testing. Uh, so that sees, that line sees an increase of a thousand dollars. Uh, training is, uh, an increase of a thousand dollars also. A lot of other departments kind of turn to, to, to HR for some of their training needs, so HR has some money in, in their budget to supplement that. Uh, advertising, this is for job advertising, is down, uh, two and a half thousand. Uh, just because most of the town's job postings are done through ADP and not, uh, manually posted on places like Indeed and Glassdoor. So we just see that required money coming down. Any other questions on HR?
Cheryl, uh, do we, do, are we posting every job on our website?
Yes, we are posting every job on the website and then it goes out through ADP.
Okay.
Whether it's pull, uh, full-time or part-time. So, um, Deanna is on board with that and we are doing every position.
Thank you.
Hi Penny.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good, sorry, a little late.
No problem.
But on to, uh, IT. So IT sees an increase of twenty, almost twenty-seven percent this year. They are requesting, uh, a new full-time employee, uh, network system engineer. Um, that is, I think, in the budget right now for sixty-five thousand or so. Um, IT has basically, you know, the department got created in nineteen ninety-eights with two staff members. They added a third in two thousand and three and it's been about twenty years that they've been gaining responsibilities, um, with those three people and it's kind of at the breaking point where you really need a fourth one in there. IT kind of, it, I think naturally becomes the department that takes on a lot of responsibility, whether it's signing up for things like open gov and maintaining some of it or the, anything that really interfaces with the town will naturally flow through IT. So they, and not to mention the additions of, of cybersecurity measures and training for departments and, and so on. Having, uh, you know, someone on, on call at all times really, um, that's why they have an extra FTE in there. Um, their service contracts are going up forty thousand. This is the inclusion of thirty thousand dollars for open gov. This used to be divided up into a couple of different departments like land use and building and, and health. Um, but now it's being consolidated into one department in IT. Um, and also, uh, the difference ten thousand dollars being increases in some of their yearly current contracts. And voice of data is up, uh, seven hundred just for new devices anticipated for, uh, for their hire. Any questions on IT? Uh, to the town clerk. So the town clerk and registrar both kind of are gonna see the, the same trends. Um, there's a presidential election, there is early voting, that's newly mandated. There's six districts instead of three, so there's kind of big jumps in, in both of them, but they're really for the same reasons. So the town clerk has a ten percent increase, uh, salaries full-time. This was a salary increase for the town clerk that was voted on by town council last year. Um, salary part-time, part-time elections and salary overtime are all election-related, um, increases, that's two thousand, three thousand and thirty-three hundred-ish. Um, postage and supplies, those are up two thousand and thirty-two hundred. Also again, election-related, uh, the supplies office, I think, is, uh, the, I think it's the mail-in ballots. I think she covers the mail-in ballots and postage, obviously, as needed for that. Um, outside contract service, the prices of cotton software is expected to increase, so this is representing that. Any questions on the town clerk?
Okay. That was, were you covering, were you covering registrar voters, county clerk, or just town clerk down?
Next up is registrar voters.
Sorry.
No, you're good. No, you're okay.
No, you're right. It, it, as Josh, uh, Josh said, the same reasons are for both. That's what it was.
Yeah.
The same reasons of the increases are, are, uh, for both departments.
Got you, thanks.
Yeah, so the registrar is up eighteen and a half percent. Again, uh, the election or the voting in six districts. Part-time salary office, part-time elections are up ten thousand, three thousand respectively. Training has actually been pared down twenty-one hundred. Um, this is really just adjusting it to what the historic actuals have been. Uh, even though future meaning, but future training will be needed on new equipment that comes, uh, down the line. Uh, the, the election personnel and support are up eighteen thousand and, uh, twenty-five hundred. Uh, canvassing, postage and supplies office are up seven hundred, five hundred, thousand. Uh, supplies office, I think, are for in-person ballots. Um, again, these are really just because of the increases in, in the, uh, you know, aforementioned reasons. Any questions there? Uh, the building department. So you'll see between the building and the land use departments, they were previously combined into the land use department, but now this is separated out into building department such as bill permits and so on, and land use is now planning zoning and him and what. So the, the, uh, percentage change you see is off of the revised budget, not off of the adopted budget. So the building department sees a two point nine percent increase from the revised budget FY twenty-four. Um, service contracts are down twenty-four hun, uh, sorry, forty-two hundred, uh, representing the handoff of open gov to IT. Uh, and professional services are up, of course, on forty-two hundred. Uh, and this is for anticipated affordable housing tran- transcriptions, the services that are needed as well as, um, Brian is looking to have an electrical inspector, inspector to handle a lot of the new complex systems like EV, charging, uh, energy storage, batteries, CHP and solar. This is all very light, uh, you know, uh, just complex is, is really the best word for it. That goes beyond scope of, I think, average electrical, um, electrician set. You know, electrical work that we can kind of do on. Any questions on building?
Um, I just have a question. Is legal for this particular department a part of the retainer, or is that part of the? Oh, you have.
I think general, well, building department doesn't really often have legal. It's usually for planning and zoning that has the legal fees, um, associated with them. And they're, they're usually not within the retainer, I don't believe.
They're not even in the retainer now. The retainer's in the legal lines.
Usually, yeah.
Okay, so do you have a budget or, or a line item to, uh, assign to each department to cover some of that expected additional cost?
For, 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 oh, for the transcription services?
No.
Or, or for litigation with P O, for example?
Hold on, so Chris, do you wanna explain it all?
No, so, so the, the four hundred thousand that's within the legal department really is just a roll-up of, of all the other departments beneath it. So when police has, um, it's, when they have legal fees, we take out of that four hundred thousand and roll it down to their line.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I wanted to know because in twenty twenty-one, you have it broken down further. So I wasn't sure if that is being taken out and then billed as used.
That's actuals, not, that's, so, it's like Josh is saying, right? When, when a bill is paid or needed, like, then that's when they break it down, right? And then it rolled up in twenty twenty-one to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total for the town. They don't break it, you don't budget by, meaning you don't budget legal fees by department. You just do a overall umbrella budget and then to do your actuals, right?
Well, one small correction I would make is for twenty-one, the total was actually five hundred and ninety thousand. Oops, sorry.
Oh.
Uh, the total on the bottom here.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Plus it up here is really, I think, mostly the retainer as well as some other miscellaneous, uh, miscellaneous fees that didn't make their way down.
The thing is, what I'm looking at or looking for is the fact that we are expecting litigation with eight thirty G. And the four hundred seems arbitrary if it doesn't include some sort of contingency for additional expenses where we know we're going to see them.
Well, we have that in a different department contingency that we can move over to legal as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
So Josh, yeah, hundred and thirty-eight thousand of professional services that are listed for land use. Those are not litigation, those are what, professional, non-legal professionals?
Correct. Uh, and now voter, bill, um, land use. Um, you're looking at the hundred thirty-eight?
Yeah, yeah, from twenty-four.
That was for the P O C D.
Oh, okay, okay. So just, yeah, why it dropped, why how?
That's, that's why it dropped, yeah, the P O C D. And that's why their budget is a little bit hard to kind of manage, uh, on its own. I don't know, before I get to it, are there any other questions from the building department? So, uh, like you said, land use has a drop of nine percent, which is about sixty thousand, the bulk of which is seventy-three thousand from the P O C D that took place, uh, in FY twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, the, for, for land use, uh, salary OT is increasing. There's, uh, it's essentially gonna be two hours per eligible FTE per week. Um, this is mainly used, I think, for transcribing. Um, professional services, like I said, is down. Um, if, right now, professional services is at sixty-five thousand, fifty thousand, which is for zoning regulation updates and possible implementation plans for the P O C D based on the results, as well as, um, As well as um fifty thousand in anticipated transcription fees. Any other questions on land use? Okay, on to, alright, so we're grouping some of us.
Sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Um so I understand there's this, there's this um motivation or drive to to reduce the number of. Part time employees or the need for it, but is it? Is it, I I we see this also like sort of tremendous increase in overtime and is that more economical and efficient? To pay overtime to full time employees rather than have, or is it not, is that not? Um the way it's being looked at in the first selectmen's office? Is it more expensive to have part time employees or to pay overtime? It's it's really my question.
Hillary, I think it depends on the position and the department, so what we've been doing this year is really looking at each department. And so in the selectmen's office, that part time position, what was going on, there wasn't really needed even in overtime basis. So that was cut altogether, it wasn't like we were adding to overtime. When we look at something like land use, we need those um individuals with those. Uh credentials to be able to do those inspections, so.
Okay.
I think every department, it it's a little different, um but it is definitely cheaper to do it on a part time basis than an overtime basis.
Generally, but but it's but it's really specific to depart- to department.
Department.
Okay, I just see this, and I mean, looking at the raw numbers, you can see that it's, you know, dollar for dollar. Less, but the increase in overtime is is always just something that I'm, you know, that jumps out at me.
Correct, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on land use? Okay, so uh health and security benefits, pension and O P A and insurance. Um right now, the contribution to the health uh town benefits fund is at three point three percent. Um let's see, I don't think this is actually applicable anymore since we did technically already reduce it based on. Um the A D A C and expected uh paid claims from the O P A. Four one A B O is the specifically the board of ed contributions that we contribute to their four one A plan is up seven point four percent. That's a number that's given to us by the board of ed. Uh wellness is up twenty five hundred, this is utilized uh by all departments. And utilization is up, so it's it's kind of going to match that. Town pension contribution right now is based on the Hooker and Holcomb report. Um but it may go down possibly. Um workers' comp, right now, in what you see is a a three percent placeholder, but I do think that number's. Being looked at right now, um and uh once we kind of get a a more firm number, that number will change probably within the next few weeks, weeks. Um any questions on these three?
Okay, sorry, Josh, could you just go over again? The explanation of the three point three percent increase in in the benefits fund number, is your thing?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Hi Eric, so the three, the three point three in our uh O P A account. Um we currently right now pay all the claims through the town, through our contribution. We don't put them through the trust because we want to keep the funds in there to keep that return up. When we do our act, when they do the actuarial study each year. The contribution um, the contribution to the plan is higher than the the act A D A C, which is the actuary determines employer contribution. So you have a sheet, I believe Josh sent you, that shows that our current request is seven point six. Do you have that, um you received that one?
It should have been sent today, an hour or two ago, yeah.
I wanna.
No, I didn't see it.
So uh so our estimated, right now, and this this is moving for, you know, the next couple of months. Right now, the estimated cost of the healthcare plan and everything with the retirees and and the the actors is seven point six million. Out of the, okay, so out of that seven point six million, a million is contribution by employees, uh retirees and um the library.
Yeah.
So it brings the number to six point six. Our budget is six point three. The difference is that we're actually gonna take three hundred thousand dollars of the employee, of the retirees' claims and put it against the trust.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, it it would have been a lot higher, but we're actually gonna utilize the trust. Um of about three hundred thousand without having an impact to that trust.
So there are, there are two things going on, there are estimates that are moving.
Yep.
And there are mechanisms by which some of this will be funded from another area.
Exactly, that's exactly it, yeah.
Alright, so that's six point three may or not be what we actually end up with.
It it couldn't move if our claims, cause you know, they they go back for twelve months, they look at the claims, they see if high claims drop off or where our current claims are trending. So closer to time when the board of finance may need to make their vote, we'll have a better number again, um so we'll see, yep.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions on these three? On to parking, um so parking sees a one point five six percent increase. Uh salaries overtime is down five thousand, this is bringing it in line with what the actuals have been and what anticipated usage will be. Um outside contract service, um this is an expense that coincides with how many parking tickets we give. Um so there's kind of a corresponding uh revenue side of this. As ticketing has been trending downward, this number will also naturally be trending downward as well. Um property con- property service contract, this was our leasing of the telephone lot for business permits, which is no longer available to lease. So that's down a hundred percent. The supplies sign is down a hundred percent as well, I believe that was four thousand. Um that was really uh utilized by the D P W uh budget to uh, you know, put signs in parking lots and so on. So we just decided to make the transfer over to the D P W budget instead of keeping it here. And banking and transaction fees, it shows as as an uh as an increase of fifty two percent. But um in reality, it's it's more of us correcting um the way that we're accounting for the revenue coming in. The way that that we are uh going to be accounting for it is the revenue comes in as um. The gross amount of revenue and then we pay banking and transaction fees from there. So there's gonna be a higher uh higher revenue and then a higher expense to correspond. Uh in the past, I think, just because of uh the way that we had gotten information from uh the parking. Standard vendor, I guess, is is the way to say it. Um they kind of net it before getting it to us, so we had been booking it netted already. Uh so this is just not really an increase, it's more just truing up uh how we do things accounting wise. Um but on the general fund, it'll be a net neutral kind of change.
Is that, is that the fee paid to boxcar when people use the app?
Uh is it for boxcar?
Oh, uh no, not boxcar.
It might be paid by phone, that's that's the biggest. Uh yeah.
Okay.
Tell the number.
Boxcar is a separate company, isn't it? We don't do income from.
But we do get income from them and we'll see them later on the revenue side.
Okay.
Um any questions on parking?
Yeah, one one of the, I'm looking ahead at the revenue section for parking and I don't see an offset to the banking transaction fees. Is that because the offset is including any expenditure?
So do you want me to skip ahead or, because I can, because there's a.
You can explain it, I can do that.
Okay, there, because there is another corresponding change on the revenue side, uh again, I was kind of truing up how's how things happen. Um but we'll get there, it's pretty, it's pretty soon. Um debt service contingency and transfers. So debt service for the most part is remaining flat, the only increase is sixty three thousand on the board of ed I T tech lease. Uh salary contingency right now is at uh three hundred seventy five thousand. This includes, there shouldn't be a comma there. Um this includes non union cost of living adjustment, D P W steps and cola, which is. Uh currently being negotiated as well as two hundred sixty one budgeted uh paydays versus two hundred sixty days. Uh so that's included in the three hundred seventy five thousand. Uh transfer to tax supported capital, that is at one point nine seven. Um so in the previous years, we utilized uh bond premium and tax supported capital fund balance to reduce this. Um in recent years, we've had a lot of bond premium um and a lot of fund balance, so we were able to reduce it, as you see in twenty three, down to. You know, about two hundred, two hundred thirty thousand. This year, we're still kind of working on how much bond premium we will really have before we put a number in there. Um also, we're um we're looking at the fund balances of extra duty, which may have a couple hundred thousand to offset some some police capital. And there may be some additional uh tax supported capital fund balance from um the board of ed. Closed a lot of uh capital projects that roll into the fund balance for us utilize. And the other departments like D P W are now working down the list to see what they can close for us to use as funds for next year to offset this number. Any questions on these? Onto the revenues. So the finance department revenue is up sixty two percent. Um the main drivers here are interest on investment, that's anticipated at two million or up one point one thousand. Um this is uh anticipated market conditions in the coming year and an increase in in available funds for the treasury to invest. Um we're expecting a kind of a um uh uh, I would say in depth look, but a look at those assumptions tonight at the board of finance meeting. By uh by Andrew Brooks should be on. Um and he should be walking us through how exactly that two million is broken up based on, I believe it's three or so. Um projection models and assumptions that he's gone through and kind of averaged that out to that two million. Uh rental of property finance, this is down uh three hundred eighty thousand. Um right now, there's no anticipated board of ed revenue, uh board of ed rents, revenue on the town side for two twenty elm. And state grants is up three hundred thirty two thousand because we're not including the town aid roads grants. In the general fund as opposed to how we used to account for it on the capital side of things as an offset.
Uh Josh, I have a question, we're not paying for the board of ed rent, but we're paying for the same building with the police department while the new police building is being.
So this is, this is on the revenues, this is like rent, we expected the board of ed to pay us.
Okay.
Yeah, which they're not, I don't think they're going to, no, no, so, so.
Okay.
Any questions on finance revenue? Um to tax successor and collector, um. The tax, I guess I don't even have a write up on that, so tax successor has just the state property rebate. Um that number we get from the governor's biennial budget and it's really just a projection. Uh as you can see in the past, we've gotten as much as a hundred, one thousand. Um but it's one of those that you can't really count on, so we don't want to budget for uh what we have gotten last year, we just budget what is. Um the estimated amount that they put in the governor's budget. For the tax collector, the tax collection current, obviously, is just a plug number until the budget. Um well, until really the mill rate is voted on. Um well, that's how the budget is this kind of funded and maybe voted on as well. Um tax collection prior is three hundred thousand, that's really what we put in there after the year. And uh the fees and interest is the same, two hundred fifty thousand that we put every year as well. Any questions on these?
Another question, but a simple observation, the back of the envelope, yield rate would be about sixteen looking at this number.
Um well, there should be a like a kind of a placeholder number in the second ish page of the budget book, which is around sixteen, yeah.
Yeah, alright, thanks.
Yep. On to the town clerk, um it's mostly flat with a couple of drops in recording fees. Uh I don't know, it's M R S, M R S is also a tip, a tip of recording fee as well.
Mortgage, electronic recording over the state.
Uh and copier revenue also, uh these are really just bringing the revenues in line with what we see the actuals for twenty three and projections for twenty four. Um any questions on the town clerk? Um building and land use, so as you see here, it's, I put them together just to illustrate it a little better since they got separated out. Um they're pretty much flat for the most part, building permits are had, are held at eight fifty. And zoning permits and rental fees and so on are being kept flat versus F Y twenty four. Any questions on these two?
Uh, in a, okay, is this like the previous page we looked at legal, where you're just putting a top line number and you're not budgeting out all the others?
So, so this is slightly different, this is uh one department that's been kind of separated into into two departments. So what you're seeing is um basically there is no history right now in the land use department. Um so, but the lines are corresponding, uh so you should be able to look back and see what the historical data has been.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Um on to the parking department. So parking sees a, it's, it shows as a five percent dip, but it's not really a five percent dip. Um parking permits are down uh a hundred thousand. Um so what had been happening is we have the general funds, which these are all part of. And then we have a parking fund which pays for um repairs and so on to parking lots. And every year, based on a calculation, a certain num- a certain amount of parking revenue gets transferred over into that parking fund. Um the calculation is quite complex and it's based off of a a number in two thousand eleven. Um and so the way it had prior or previous years been accounted for is, as you can see, five hundred thousand. Uh in F Y twenty four and a hundred thousand in in the parking fund. Um but since we're making that transfer, that's obviously bringing down that five hundred thousand to truly four hundred thousand. And if you look historically, skipping the COVID year, of course, it's much closer to what the actuals have been. Uh so we're kind of just correcting that accounting wise and uh that way we, when we look and project for parking permits, we. We realize that we're a a lot closer to hitting the target and not falling short by a hundred, hundred twenty thousand or so. Um parking tickets are down twenty five thousand, this is the corresponding um decrease in the. Uh the expense that we had talked about, there's just been less tickets being given, bigger focus on kind of educating and controlling where the public park. Um parking meters is up forty thousand, just um reflecting an increase and trend um of the revenue over the past few years. And boxcars up thirty thousand, um also kind of increasing, um showing the popularity of boxcar versus day passes at Town and Chill.
Is boxcar needs exactly what?
Boxcar, I think, is a service that has kind of a reserved space that someone can can, I guess, reserve the parking for a day. As opposed to purchasing a a a day pass. Um and I guess the convenience of it just outweighs the day passes, but we still see revenue probably minus the service fee.
Thanks.
Yep.
And boxcars at St. A's, right?
Um as far as I know, yeah, is it, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, I don't think we see that here.
We don't see that revenue, that's a separate contract?
Oh, oh, for St. A, I I hear you, right, sure.
It's for, yeah.
The only ones we see are, I think, are at Town.
Yep.
Oh, so you can do boxcar at Town and Chill for a day or get a day pass through the town and we're finding that boxcar is is. What people are going to for the most part.
Yeah.
Okay, how do you get a day pass? Do you, is it electronic like boxcar where you can do an app or do you have to go into town hall or something and get a pass?
That's a, that's a really good question, I'll have to find that out.
Yeah.
Isn't that just, use a credit card at at the machine, I think, in Town and Chill?
Oh, there you go, okay. This is how much I take the train.
Yeah, retired now.
Sorry, I continue. Sorry, continue, thanks.
Awesome, um, on to insurance liability and miscellaneous. Um, insurance liability, member equity is down fifty thousand. Uh, Purimah let us know uh that we won't be receiving any member equity payment from them in this coming year. Um, miscellaneous has operating transfers in. Uh, this includes five hundred thousand as a placeholder for bond premium that we look to spend uh spend, I guess, offset debt service interest with, as well as um an anticipated sixty thousand of uh of funds being transferred in from the dog fund, which is one of our smaller funds that uh we're kind of looking to close. One of the things the odd winners wanted us to do was close some of our our smaller uh funds. And so this is being brought into uh the general fund, you'll see kind of an increase on uh, is it, I think, animal control, animal control that has an increase in revenue and expenses as well. Um, that kind of um shows some of the revenue expenses within the dog fund. So this is the fund balance being brought over as a long-time kind of injection of revenue. Any questions on these two? Okay, and that's kind of it for revenue. Um, there aren't many capital projects for general gov. Uh, I T has the three major ones, which are just uh I T, general hardware, software, land network hardware, software, and there's cybersecurity, dark trace uh mitigation. Um, so that's ninety thousand, eighty thousand, fifty five thousand, these have been their annual costs that they have. Um, and for the parking department, the parking department's really looking to uh replace their current uh parking software called Passport, their permitting and ticketing software. It's just not really functionality-wise, doing what it should be doing. Um, I know they're having a lot of difficulty, maybe just driving and checking permits in parking lots. Um, and, you know, certainly customer service issues and so on, so they're putting together an R S P to go out for bid and kind of uh touching base with other parking departments in the area and seeing what's been working well for them. Um, and that's it for capital projects. Any questions or any general questions?
Uh, another question, so much as an observation. Clearly, the biggest driver of the increase in expenses, either salaries, has about a quarter of a billion dollars. Um, sounds like a pretty big number, but in a hundred and seventy seven million dollar budget, it's really not. Uh, but as we're looking to cut back, um, I'm assuming those cannot be reduced or can be reduced though.
Yeah, so the salaries, so, um, you know, I I work with Cheryl in H R, I'm putting together together the salaries. Um, the town has, you know, we have town non-union, we have town hall union, fire union, police union, D P W union.
Yeah.
You know, all of the union contracts are fixed, uh, at least the ones that aren't in current negotiations. Uh, we have placeholder amounts in salary contingency for those, uh, what we kind of guess it might be for those who've negotiated contracts. Um, there there isn't really much wiggle room in that number other than the non-union COLA. Um, that's really the only thing that's variable, uh, and I think.
That's a small.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty small, yeah, it's a pretty small per, you know, percentage of people. I don't know the percentage breakdown of non-union employees versus union, I I would probably guess it's ten percent, but that's just a guess. Um.
But that would be department heads and others?
It would be, yeah, yes. Most of which have stepped out and uh are only getting COLAs since people seem to stay here a while.
Another question, another another driver, though, probably not as significant, is the contribution to the four oh one A accounts. And I I think you mentioned that had increased from six percent to seven percent, is that, am I right?
Yeah, it's the matching in that one, the employee. Six percent for town hall union and now seven percent. And you see that in other departments as well, um, I think in general gov, you probably see it more since we have a lot of town hall union employees. Um.
So these were, this increase was negotiated as part of contracts.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Can I, I'll add one more thing that uh Josh has touched on and and it does have an effect because of how we're budgeting. So someone may make a hundred thousand dollars, but their budget is not. So their hu, their budget could be a hundred and two. So we have from a budgetary perspective, probably seventy five to eighty K more for everyone. Not that they're making it, but it's the number of days in the count in the fiscal year. So when we come to the end of the year, there could be, the first payroll in July uh is usually split. It could be fifty fifty, it could be four days in June, six days in July. We have to do that day count to know that a person just doesn't, from a budgetary basis, the person just doesn't make a hundred thousand dollars in the budget perspective because it's a day count. So then you're gonna have the offsetting taxes for a lot, you know, you'll have that. So that extra day throws in that budgetary basis. And just be, they don't make that money, it's just purely budget. So it's a hundred and sixty one days in twenty fiscal year twenty five. So you have to, you have to budget for those, that number of days, because I've got to do that year-end tool to put it in the appropriate fiscal year. And in the leap year, it could go up another one, so you we have to keep an eye out on the day count.
I think the other part too, um, Hillary, is especially in the past, I would say, really since COVID, it's very difficult to find employees and we are finding that they're playing us against all of our area towns. So, um, we have tried to come up with a budget that we stick with. Um, we don't want to be paying the top, but we certainly don't want to be paying the lowest. And so that's something that we have really struggled with over the past two years.
Understood.
Uh, Cheryl, a question, we are one of the most expensive towns to live in. Why would you want to stay in the mid-range if if it would affect the quality of individual that you're getting?
We aren't really staying in the mid-range, we're more towards the top. But what what I'm saying is, you're right, we do want to attract the best and we do have to pay for that. Um, we have employees, I think, as you know, traveling an hour and an hour and a half a day um, just to receive those salaries and benefits. But we definitely struggle with that with all of our area towns. When we make offers, they will have three or four offers and finding that they're all playing us against each other.
But that's also a demand in the in the employment uh area arena.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
And we're working together as H R directors so that we're not outpricing each other. And, I mean, we want to make sure that we get the best of the best um in New Canaan and we do, we do our best to to achieve that, whether it's police, fire, public works. Um, but we're we're just finding it across the board in every one of our divisions.
I don't want to um continue on this, but just as an example, the Board of Ed is having a hard time bringing teachers in because they're going into other industries. So by not making it attractive enough, they're gonna go into another industry, which is the problem many find themselves in.
Correct.
So that's all I have for you, but if you have more questions, just send me an email. Um, and this, we'll be on again tonight, Board of Finance.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for your time, appreciate it.
Have a good one.
Yep, thanks.
Bye.
Bye bye.
You do a great job, thank you very thorough.
Thank you, thank you. Stop.